And if you could just state your name and title for the record, please.
I'm Dr. Susan Lowry, the Health Officer of Charles County.
Yeah, Dr. Lowry.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners and County Residents. I'm here to give you a briefing on latest on coronavirus. The role of the Health Department is to educate the public for practices that will enhance public health. We also during this crisis communicate closely with agencies and partners to relay information from Maryland Department of Health and from the CDC. In this special emergency, what we also do is conduct surveillance and facilitate testing and coordination of diagnoses. So as of this morning, the website for health.maryland.gov states that there are 37 cases in the state of Maryland. However, I just got a communication saying that there are 20 new cases. I don't know anything about whether they're confirmed or whether what these 20 quote new cases mean because 37 has been there for a while. So some of the cases that we have in Maryland are travel-related, but others are community spread, which means that when that person tests positive, we can't trace the contact from which they got their virus. The good news is that the three, one of the first, the first set that got, were tested positive, three of them have recovered, which means that symptom-free, including fever-free, cough-free, and they tested negative times two, given two intervals spaced apart. So in Charles County, as of this moment, as far as I know, we have one positive case. That case is of a female who's in her 50s with an underlying condition. So what happens when someone become, is tested positive for COVID? The MDH, Maryland Department of Health, and the Health Department initiates immediately upon notification investigation and contract tracing. For instance, the person who tested positive reveal, shared with us their whereabouts, when, what, where, when, and why for the past 30 days. We can go back further if needed, but for this case, it was 30 days of where have you been? This includes where she went shopping, what the address was, what time she went, how crowded it was at that time. It also included where she, where they might have gone out to eat, where they went to church, what time they went to church, how many people were in church, and how close she sat next to, how close this person sat next to someone. Other things would be who visited you, who did you visit? Did you go to any kind of tournament that was in an enclosed space? Did you socialize with anybody? Did you go to the community center? We just needed her to remember every place that she had been and when. So subsequent to that, then we would contact all places she had been, either telling, say, the restaurant that this person was there at this time and they're positive. So if you were in a, if a county resident was in a, say, a chess tournament in the community center at such and such time, such and such date, we would contact all, we would contact the individuals and speak to them with, we would speak with them following a questionnaire to test, to screen for the possibility of COVID-19. Upon finishing that process, we would then determine whether this person needed quarantine, no evaluation, or medical evaluation, or potentially testing. So if you were, if you have a child who's in school and that your child was in contact with the child of a positive COVID case, the school would be notified as well as the individual to determine what the next step is. So why is contact tracing so important? Well, it goes back to how the virus is transmitted. So as you all know, the virus is transmitted through three key ways. One is coughing and respiratory droplets if you happen to be standing there. The second is contact with surface because the virus lives on surfaces, the cough drops do. So those are the ways that one would get it, basically through respiratory droplets. And as you can see, you can, you didn't get those, you couldn't touch the virus or be there coughing, or through coughing if you weren't near the person. And so that's where social distancing comes from. And social distancing is a form of community-oriented, community-focused mitigation technique to decrease the spread of virus. Historically and mathematically, it works. The pandemic of 1918 is actually, can be seen as a tell of two cities. Philadelphia did not institute social distancing in a timely manner, whereas St. Louis instituted it right away, which means that they closed churches, they closed schools, they closed community activities. The end result was that Philadelphia, who didn't do social distancing, had a death rate of 719,000 per 100,000 population, whereas St. Louis had half that amount, less than half that amount. They had 347,000 deaths per 100,000 people. So it does, social distancing does work. So what do we get for not having Easter egg hunts, no circus, no baseball, no churches, church congregations, no eating out? What we buy is we buy time because that's what we need right now is the healthcare system needs time. We have to slow down the rate of viral transmission, which seems to occur fairly easily because they're, they're, it's community transmission where we can't trace where it came from. So we need to buy time for the healthcare system to shore up its resources. And that would include developing more tests, getting more test kits, creating more reagents, more media, all of which are in short supply. Now, Maryland, over the last decade or so, has decreased their beds significantly because there was a push towards outpatient services for several reasons. So they have 9,000, about eight or 9,000 beds right now. However, within the next month or so, there will be more beds coming up, more beds emerging because the governor and MDH have decided to reopen hospitals that were closed, as well as use other facilities for hospitalization. Now, that could give the wrong impression that everybody's going to be hospitalized. That is not the case. Approximately 20% of those who are infected with COVID will have some severe symptoms requiring either extensive inpatient, or they may require just a couple of days depending on their condition. And as you can guess, those 20% are what we had already tagged as high-risk individuals who are at risk for severe disease. And those would be the elderly and those with underlying conditions that affect the immune system. Cancer, diabetes, heart disease, and other diseases where you're on immunosuppressants long-term. But just remember, most people are either asymptomatic, or they have mild symptoms like they would a common cold. But it's those 20% that we have to get rid of. And so while you're, that, that, those 20% that we have to bring out of the outpatient setting into inpatient settings. So while this sounds alarming, most people do get over the virus and many people are asymptomatic. So aside from decreasing transmission, we're protecting our population that is at high risk. So State Department, Foreign Service statistics show, based on analysis of what's happened in other countries, that if you are over the age of 30, over the age of 80, these are just descriptive stats, you, the death rate was 15, approximately 15%. If you are under the age of 40, the stats were 0.2%. So you can see that the age is a, age is a factor. So given all these developments and they change, policies change daily, if not by, if not maybe twice daily, it can become very confusing if, confusing for residents who are trying to understand why life has changed so much. And to that end, the Health Department has a hotline that is answered by nurses, and that number is 301-609-6717. And if you have any questions, you can ask, and don't be surprised that you call on Tuesday, you get one answer, and then your friend calls on Wednesday and they get a slightly different answer because information is evolving and things are changing. Aside from the hotline, we're working closely with emergency management to make sure that we are prepared. And we also have developed screening tools for agencies who come in close contact with residents who could potentially have COVID-19. So with that, I just want to say that hand washing is still your best method, and it's a time-old method that would have been applicable during the plague in the Middle Ages. It's hand washing and social distancing. If you just wash your hands, and wash your hands, and keep washing your hands, it can only help you and the community, and of course, social distancing. So with that, I want to close and thank you for your time and take questions. And my crew is here and they can also answer your questions.
Good morning. Thank you for being here with us and providing us important information. I do have a question. I noticed last night on the news that St. Mary's County started the drive-through testing. Do you know if we are planning to do that here in Charles County?
That's been in plans for about a week. That was actually initiated by the hospital and there are communications with other people. So we were, you're talking specifically about drive-by?
Correct.
Testing, yes. So there is definitely plans for that. We actually had, there are very detailed plans for that. The discussion was based on, well, where are we going to have it? At one time, we thought the parking lot of the Health Department. And then now it's in the hands of people who, the hospital has the reagents and the hospital has the, the medic, has the personnel who will be doing the testing. And so what you would need is just a note from your doctor saying you should be tested. Okay? So it, the plans were to start Monday or Tuesday. I haven't spoken with them this morning, this morning yet.
Okay.
But they, they were good enough to initiate it. And as you may know, there is also urgent care that's headed by Robert, Dr. Robert Graul. He is planning on doing testing too. But there, when you go there, you get a medical evaluation and then they determine whether you get the testing or not.
Understood. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much. Have a question for you, two of them. Do, do we have enough test kits and the criteria for testing? Just want to make sure that our audience know what the criteria is for this testing and that we have sufficient test kits to, to test.
There's criteria for testing that's set by the CDC and MDH. So when the Health Department does that testing, we follow those guidelines. As you can imagine, the testing and the ER pretty much follows what we do, and the ER only tests for people who are very ill and who fit that criteria. Things have changed a bit. There, others will do, others it will, there's testing that can be done that possibly could be left to the discretion of your own physicians. For instance, the drive-by. You, there's no medical assessment at the drive-by, which is going to be a tent. You would go to your doctor and your doctor would determine whether you should be tested or not, and we don't, and so you can get a prescription and you just go to the drive-by. Those criteria may be different, as may be different in the urgent care. Because it is understandable why everybody would want to be tested. Ideally, that would give us great information if I could test 155,000 of the residents because that would tell me, wait a minute, 80% of the positive are asymptomatic and they're all kids. So that would tell me a lot of information. As far as the test kits and how many we have, I have, I have a very reliable source that told me that we cannot, we will have limited testing capability because there is a shortage of rea, there is, the amount of reagents that we have right now and the amount of media that we have right now, and let me backtrack a little bit. So you take a, you take a swab and you swab somebody's nose, then you have to put it in a specific liquid that is viral transport media. Otherwise, it won't live, or it will be altered when it's sent to the actual lab that does the testing. So there is going to be, there is a, we don't have as much reagent and transport media as we would like to be able to test everybody. If we follow the strict criteria, we may have enough. If we don't, I'm not sure, I'm not certain what will happen. Of course, they're trying to create more reagents and, and items that we need to do the collection, but right now, it looks like if it goes down this path where anybody and everybody is being tested, we will not have, we may not have enough testing capacity.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Bowden.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for having me.
And I want to thank everybody in the audience for coming out. There's a lot of leaders in our community out there today that are directly impacted by what's going on and that are taking steps behind the scenes to ensure that first, there's no panic, and second, that we're putting things in place that will keep our community safe. And I think it's important to understand, for me at least, that the steps we've taken so far and the governor has taken to keep people separated and to keep people home is probably the biggest and the best way to keep this from being spread. And the steps that are being taken by our DES, by the Sheriff's Department, and by the school system are further helping assist with that, that problem so it doesn't get to your point, to where we need to have folks tested more. I, I don't know, Mr. President, if we're going to allow DES and the Sheriff's Department, maybe the school system, to have an opportunity to speak. I think it's important because I know for us behind the scenes, our Department of Emergency Services, which is the one agency that we, you know, the county commissioners control, they've been doing a lot of work. And I know they've been working a lot with your office, and there's a lot that we know that precautions have been put in place, updates that we're constantly getting, that make me feel very comfortable that our county is being very proactive and doing the right thing so we don't get to a point where other areas, like you were speaking of earlier, where people were reactive in prior years, 100 years ago, and it led to more spread of the disease. And I think we've done a lot, and I think we need to focus on that so the people listening, because there's a lot of people home right now that are listening to what we're doing and it's going to reflect on how they react with their children and with everybody else. And I guess I'll defer to when we can allow the school system and DES, Department of Emergency Services, and the Sheriff's Department to come up. But I just want to thank everyone in the room for what they've done so far. And for the people that are on the front lines, I know that you all are probably the most susceptible to all of this because you're coming either A, in contact, especially our first responders, and I really mean thank you. So I'll defer to you, Mr. President. Do you, do you know when they're going to come up and speak?
No, they, once this presentation is complete.
Okay. I just want to make sure, but thank you, thank you very much for what you all, all of you have been doing. Appreciate it.
Any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Lowry.
Thank you so much.
All right, Commissioner, President, we're going to go ahead and invite up the school board to give a brief statement on their plan of action.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Hill, Superintendent, Charles County Public Schools.
Virginia McGraw, Chairman of Charles County Board of Education.
And I'd also like to recognize we have four board members with us, Mr. Hancock, Mrs. Abel, Mr. Lucas, and Vice Chair Tina Wilson. We appreciate them being here. Commissioners, I'd like to walk you through the last couple of weeks in regards to what has been going on with your school district. At the end of February, my operations team, which is my leadership group, met with folks from the Charles County Department of Health to begin planning for what our responses would be for the COVID-19 crisis that has hit our nation and our state. We began planning then, and we began talking about the importance of communicating well and communicating regularly with our staff and with our community. Since then, those meetings have continued. I want to thank Dr. Lowry for her leadership and her team. We sent out a combined letter to our community to let them know how we're, we were reacting. We also have a very robust website presence where the community can look back through time over the communications that we have sent out. As you know, late last week, the governor, through the state superintendent, closed all public schools in Maryland. And so when we were notified of that closure, we began immediately to be thinking about our responsibilities. And the way that I view it is that we have several levels of responsibility. First is the responsibility for the safety of our students and providing them what they need. Second is responsibility for the safety and well-being of our employees. Beyond the 27,521 students that we have, we have about 3,500 employees that we're responsible for and they're members of our community. And then the third level of responsibility that we think a lot about is our responsibility to the community as a whole. So what I have pledged to, what I pledged to you and I pledged to our community is that your school district stands ready to use its resources in any way to assist the Department of Health, the Department of Emergency Services, any department, any agency in this county to fight the COVID virus and to be sure that we do everything we can to keep our students and staff safe. That's priority number one. And we have, I've reached out, Mr. Belton and I have had several conversations about ways that we can work together and will continue to do so as needed, to use the resources that we have to keep our community safe. Our first thought, once we went into closure status, was how do we make sure our children get fed? Because with a 38% free and reduced meals percentage, we know that we have families who rely upon us to provide food for their children. So starting yesterday, we had eight sites open across the county where families could come and bring their children and get two meals, breakfast and lunch, and come back every day that we're closed to do that. Those meals, yesterday was the first day, and we served over 500 meals to families as they were coming through our various schools. I want to thank our staff, our food services staff, who very quickly mobilized this program and got it up and running without any lapse in service. Starting today, we're going to move to three meals plus a snack, which we will provide in a grab-and-go status. So this is literally folks standing on the curb in front of a school and with their boxes and coolers and everything that they have, and cars drive up. We count the number of children in the car and we hand over the amount of meals based on the number of children. It's important for the Commissioners and our community to know that we don't ask for free and reduced meal status, we don't ask, we, we ask for nothing other than how many children are in the car. We cannot provide meals for children who are not in the car at this point. We need to have the children present in front of us, any child 18 or under, no questions asked. So that was a, a big step for us to get that up and running right away.
I have one question for you.
Absolutely.
And one thing, on that note, Cobneck and that area down this very south end of the county, there's some challenges we face down there with transportation. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask, could you find a way, and maybe that we can help some of those families down the south end? Because I think the closest one is Milton Summers, and that presents a challenge for the south. And I, I know that you're doing everything you can, but that's one thing that came back to me. If we can, if there's something I can personally do to help facilitate that, if maybe Pickle Waxton or Hickton, I don't know how many students you have in that area. I know that's probably a way you equate, when you do that, this free and reduced amount of children there. I just, I don't know, so that's why I'm asking. I figured this was the opportunity to ask that question to you.
Sure. We, we are open to and flexible to, as Dr. Lowry stated, things are changing hourly, daily. So we're, we're more than open to adding sites if we need to add sites.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you advocating for folks who may not have transportation.
Thank you.
So if we talk about our employees, right now, we are on a status where almost every employee is not working, present in school buildings. The folks that are working are my leadership team, our operations team, our communications team, all of our building services folks and our maintenance folks are still working. And we are counting on them and they are doing an amazing job of cleaning and sanitizing all of our buildings. Our supervisor of operations has established a protocol where the teams will go through each building. Once a room is done, it will be shut, it will be locked, and it will be marked as clean and sanitized. So we know that that space has been taken care of. We also have provided for our families instructional resources that are on our website. Right now, these instructional resources are designed to keep children connected to school. And I need to make something clear in that these are not lessons that are going to be graded and count for a grade because there are many families who can't access those materials, and it would be unfair to hold those families accountable for those materials. But we, we recognize that many parents are anxious for things for their children to do. And so we've put up a plethora of activities on our website for children to be able to access. We are looking next steps toward how we might provide more longer-term instructional continuity for children. But that will come with some further direction from the state superintendent and the governor regarding how long we will be closed. Questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
I do. When we start investigating those areas of challenges for transportation purposes?
Yes.
And when you speak about work, because we are, some of our rural areas have challenges with internet access, perhaps there could be maybe, if you will, a twofer, maybe send some of those work projects to those families that are being delivered also their meals? Maybe that's kind of something to think about because again, similar to Commissioner Bowden, I have very challenged areas where we can't get to, and they can't get out for transportation reasons.
Thank you for the question. It reminds me, I should have already commented on this, that starting today at the meal pickup sites, there will also be instructional packet pickup sites. So those will be available at the same place. In fact, I was over at St. Charles High School yesterday watching the food pickup, and, and one of the parents said, where, where are the packets? Where are the packets? Where are the packets?" And I said, "They're coming." So our office of instruction and our folks have really pulled together and created these. But they will be available starting today.
Great. Thank you so much.
One thing that the state superintendent asked us to do, we're doing regular phone calls, so the 24 local superintendents are doing conference calls with the state superintendent at this point, three times a week. And one thing that she asked us to do, and that we had already done, was to kind of assess the ability of our kids to access online instruction. And as the Commissioners probably know, connectivity is a challenge for many of our families. And so any plans that we make regarding continuity of instruction will include paper and pencil activities. We just need to figure out how to get them to and from. So, thank you, Commissioner Coats.
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Hill.
Good morning.
The one, and first of all, thank you, and thank you for your team, for everything that you've done so far and will continue to do. I've thought about this a lot, trying to prepare my words. The one thing I do know for many years to come, folks will research and study this event and look at how different states handled the crisis. And with respect to the school system, they'll look at different school systems and figure out what was best. And I would anticipate that over years to come, that our emergency plans will be revised to include something like this. So if it happens again, we know exactly the steps to follow. As a Commissioner, I always completely support the school system. As a parent, I'm a little disappointed. I know as a teacher, when my students left Friday, they all had work to do for the next two weeks. Yesterday, I hosted an AM and a PM online session for my students, and I did have sessions, I did have students come on to ask questions and to go over the work that I gave them. One of the things that I'm disappointed in is that when I signed into my son's parent V or synergy account, I don't see any messages from teachers, no suggestion of continuing their work that was going on in the class. And I know the Charles County Commissioners, we spent a lot of money in support of that system, and it's not being utilized. So as a parent, I'm a little disappointed that I'm not seeing any communication from teachers, I'm not seeing any additional work. I do recognize on the website, there's general information broken down by grade levels. As you can imagine, being an educator, I don't need that information. I don't need general information. I was looking for specific information from teachers. So as we go through this process and we revise our emergency plans, I would hope that in the future, if something like this ever happens again, we can have a plan in place to have teachers to understand that they still have a responsibility to communicate with their students and the parents, even if we're outside of the schoolhouse. Now, when you talk about kids that they don't have access to internet, we address that too. And before kids left on Friday, the kids who said they didn't have access, they had paper copies. Also, with respect to the grading, if they don't have access, they will be given time to do the work when they return. So there is advance, there's opportunities for success for all kids. It's just that some kids that have the access, they can work on it now while they're at home. So I share, I say all of that. And I'm not criticizing Charles County Public School System, not at all. But I just want us to think about, in the future, when we develop plans, we think of other ways to make sure kids can receive instruction. Because as a parent, when I look at the website and it says, "The work that's on the website, it won't be graded," then that's a difficult conversation for me to have with my teenager, because he already knows the work is not going to be counted. So other than doing SAT prep, he's not going to be really interested in doing anything. So I'm a little disappointed about that as a parent.
I understand, and I appreciate your candor in your comments. Commissioner Stewart, we know that you are always very supportive of our school system, and we appreciate that support. And I hear what you're saying, that some teachers have not reached out. But my experience has been, I've seen a lot of teachers posting things where we haven't yet asked them to post anything, and they're saying, "Keep up with this, keep up with that," and I see a lot on social media. But I recognize the fact that there are some students who may not take advantage of the instructional resources we've provided until their teacher says, "This is your assignment for third-period algebra." And so we're working in that direction. But I am very leery of the fact that we have done so much work in closing achievement gaps, and I'm afraid that incidents like these do nothing but then reopen achievement gaps. As I think that I've said to the Commissioners, our African-American achievement in Charles County is 94.88% graduating on time in their four-year cohort. That is above the rate of 94.6 for all students. So the work that has been done with your support in this community to close those gaps has worked. And times like these where there are some folks who can access instruction and some folks cannot, really worry me and worry our team and worry our teachers in that how will we provide those supports? But I hear you, and I understand your concerns, and we're working very hard on how to get back to a more normal instruction without having students in buildings with us.
But when we talk about the research about the achievement gaps, and I think we all recognize that issue, but at the same time, it's really important to ensure that you're not forgetting everyone. So we can't say, "Well, we're not going to do anything because a few lacks access." I think the biggest question is, is how are we going to create instructional materials for all students? So to say that we're not going to start with online instruction because some folks can't access it, I don't think that's the right approach. I think it's twofold. It's the online instruction, making sure that it's built into the contract and your policies that teachers are required to continue reaching out to students, and then at the same time, making sure that you have printed materials at the schools for, like you said, for lunch, to address those issues for kids that are lacking access. So my concern is, it's not either or, it's both. And right now, I only see one way. I see that, oh, because we, a lot of, because we're not at 100% access, the kids with access, they're not required to do any work. So it needs to be both.
I understand. I don't quite completely agree. I think that we have a responsibility for all of our children, and we're working very hard right now to get the online, as well as the paper and pencil ax materials ready so that we can roll them out as soon as possible. I think that we agree theoretically on what we should be doing, it's just a matter of how do we accomplish that? I worry a lot about our students without access, our students who are special education, who need academic supports, that I don't yet know how we will provide those without an ability to be face-to-face. I worry about our English language learner students who need additional supports in the classrooms. So we are, I promise you, Commissioner, 24/7, trying to figure all of that out so that as soon as possible, we can get our kids back to regular instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, just add, I would just like to publicly thank Dr. Hill and her staff for the efforts that they have made thus far in light of this unprecedented crisis. I know that the communication has been very fluid in, to us, in a situation where information is constantly changing. So as we mentioned at the very outset, our main priority is the safety and well-being of our children. And I think as a board, we are confident that that is the first priority in Dr. Hill and her staff's approach to what's being done. So, thank you very much.
If I could, Commissioner President, mention one more thing. As you know, we have a lot of mental health supports that are available to students in our schools, which right now may not be available. And one of our partnerships is with Tri-County Youth Health Services, as well as our own in-house school psychologists. And I wanted you to know, and the community to know, that they are setting up right now hotlines, basically, for students or families who may need support during this very stressful time, and will be publicizing those phone numbers so that there can be some kind of telehealth, mental health services going on during our closure.
Thank you.
Dr. Hill, thank you so much. I appreciate the weekend call that I received. Thank you so much. You were very prompt and attentive to my questions over the weekend.
You're welcome. And if I could, that brings up another, triggers another memory, Commissioner Coats, and that is the number of folks from our community who have said, "How can we help?"
That's right.
"How can we help feed your children? How can we help make sure families have what they need?" And because of the infrastructure that a school system has, we're able to partner with folks. I've had restaurant owners call me through one of our board members. I've spoken with Brenda DeCarlo at the Southern Maryland Food Bank, who would like to begin setting up kind of pantry bags to be able to maybe, once a week, have at our sites. So, you know, these are unprecedented times, and it's unprecedented of me to come before the county commissioners in a T-shirt. But the T-shirt that I have says, "Be kind. If anything else, you can be kind." And what I've seen in this instance in our community is that kindness is going to win out over the stress and anxiety that we may feel, because we support each other. So we appreciate the opportunity to come before you.
No, thank you very much.
Commissioners, would I ask the Charles County Sheriff's Office to come forward?
Good morning, county commissioners.
Good morning.
Sheriff Troy Berry with the Charles County Sheriff's Office. I want to take this opportunity to inform the residents of the county regarding the Charles County Sheriff's Office modified operations procedures concerning the COVID-19 pandemic. As of last Friday, under my direction, the Sheriff's Office modified our response and some of our services as a preventive measure for public safety and the general public. I just want to make it very clear when I make this remark, that this Sheriff's Office has, or continue all our calls for service, and we're going about doing our regular patrol activities. But there is a slight modification to those. On certain calls, when applicable, call takers will ask health-related questions regarding flu-like symptoms and also recent travel. And if in on emergency call situations, the officers will have the autonomy to take various reports via telephone calls so that we can honor what has been asked by us, by medical personnel, for social distancing. Our staff members have been administered additional masks, gloves, and hand sanitizers for their protections. And when we have to make an arrest, an officer will evaluate the arrestee, and if the arrestee displays any symptoms of illness, officers will consider placing a mask over the arrestee's face in order we can keep that, any contaminations to a minimal. And once they arrive to our detention facility, a medical staff personnel will conduct a complete evaluation of the arrestee. We know that testing is in flux in reference to local or state testing. So under my leadership, we have contracted with a private vendor to test our officers and inmate populations to address and be able to get a 20, a 48-hour turnaround on being able to assess if someone has the virus or not. And lastly, as Haseman already said, this community takes these mandated precautions very seriously, because the health and well-being of everyone is of our concern, and I'm willing to take any questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions?
Not really a question. Thank you for what you're doing. And please thank your deputies and all your civilians for putting in the time and effort in this, because they are on the front lines. And I would want to hear from my county commissioner, if I was in their shoes, that I appreciate them, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
We appreciate the support from the county commissioners and also leaders in the community. We can only imagine the stress that public safety officials are under right now, not knowing who has the virus or who not has the virus. And we do not, in the position that we hold, we do not have the luxury of not engaging or not responding to calls. So it is definitely something that is very concerning to the staff members and also to their families. So the least we could do is make those particular tests available in a more timely manner to address any isolation matters that we have to, protocols that we may have to initiate.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I do have a question. When an arrest is made and an assessment is performed, at what level of the assessment are you going to, would you or your staff determine whether this illness warrants some kind of treatment, some kind of medical or not? Or how, what's your process and policy for handling that?
Yeah. As you know, we do have, we have a contracted service, a medical service inside our detention facility. If the person exhibits some of the signs and symptoms of the COVID-19, we are in a position inside a facility to place someone in a segregated manner or isolation manner. In this, we have eight cells or eight rooms in our detention facility that have outside ventilation. So it goes straight to the outside, so it doesn't go through the normal ventilation process. So we can able to self-quarantine someone inside our facility to see if those particular symptoms continue to manifest themselves, or they subside, or in cases of which, we have taken a test and send that out to an outside vendor and wait till those test results come back. So we're in a position to isolate individuals in safeguarding our staff and also the continued inmate population.
Would this include flu-like? I guess you couldn't determine whether it's flu-like symptoms or if it's going to be what it is. So those that even exhibit flu-like, we're probably going to isolation until you determine what it is, and testing, have some kind of medical testing? Is that kind of what you're envisioning this to play out?
Yeah, that's how it's been implemented.
Okay.
And also, even with our staff members, if they exhibit some flu-like symptoms, they are immediately to contact the commanders, and we will place certain protocols in place for them so they won't infect other staff members or any citizens.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I have a question regarding the executive order that Governor Hogan signed yesterday regarding the bars and restaurants. So with respect to Charles County, with the Sheriff's Office in the Plata, like the Police Department, are our police officers and sheriff's officers policing the executive order regarding the bars and restaurants? Or is it that, meaning, are you actively going around looking to see if everyone is complying? Or is it just that if you get a call, you come out? How does that work?
Well, as anything, it's, as you know, the, particularly if you violate the mandated suggestions by the governor, it would be a misdemeanor. And we will go, as we do our normal course of business, in addressing those particular situations. With your example, in reference to a bar, if it happens to be open, we would encourage the, speak directly to the management and request that they close the establishment in connection with the executive order from the governor.
But would the sheriff's officers be riding around looking, or would they only go to an establishment if someone called and reported them?
As we do. We look for all instances of crime, and particularly, and this is, this is a very unique situation. So we would encourage, and we would be vigilant, meaning that we would be actively looking. So if you have those particular situations, we would suggest that the business close according to the executive order. But there is a mandate within the Sheriff's Office that before any criminal charges or be filed, they will speak with the Office of General Counsel first before filing any charges. But we would do everything we can to mitigate those particular issues of, to that example, in reference to a bar establishment, to try to suggest that they close and operate within the guidelines of the governor's office.
Thank you. I was just wondering.
And I'm actually, to follow up on that, I think... And I'm actually, to follow up on that, I think we should just ask our citizens to respect what we're trying to do here, and don't put our deputies and our public safety folks in a position where they have to enforce this. It's for your own best interest to do it. And officers and our public safety people are out there because they have no choice. They can't be, they can't be quarantined to their house. When the phone picks up and the call is made, these folks have to go. So let's have some respect for the folks that are out there trying to keep you safe and try to respect what the governor's put in place and have some respect for our officers and not put them in a position where they have to take action. That's me asking. And I know that you're kind of dancing around it because you kind of have to. But I can say, just respect our public safety folks because, like I said, they have families to go home to too, and you're putting them in awful spots. If you don't have to call 911, I mean, if you have an emergency call, but if you don't have to, you're putting everybody in jeopardy. You kind of feel where I'm going, Sheriff?
Yeah. As has already been said by Dr. Lowry and others, the congregation of individuals in isolated or very close proximity of each other can spread the virus. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to mitigate this particular virus and not put other people in harm's way. So if we do not have to address those particular issues, which you're talking about, I think everyone should practice social distancing and honor what has been already instituted by our governor.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're going to now ask the La Plata Police Department.
Good morning.
La Plata Police Department wants to make sure that the public's reassured that law enforcement is out and doing what it's supposed to be doing. We've encouraged our officers to, in their vehicles, remain highly visible in the business districts during the day and in the neighborhoods in the evenings and overnight. Calls that are directly coming into our station are being screened similarly to those at the Charles County Sheriff's Office. We are asking our officers to practice social distancing whenever possible. Thus, we're taking telephone reporting on misdemeanors and other calls that there is no suspect or a threat to life, health, or safety. Any threat to life, health, or safety, our officers are responding to normally and acting accordingly. We're asking our folks to use discretion on arrest at this time when a citation can be issued instead of an on-view arrest. We're asking them to do that or to obtain some sort of charging document through the summons and warrant process. This will help limit the exposure to our officers, to the people at the jail, and the population within the jail, if we can keep folks from going in. We have regular staffing right now, but we have contingencies to beef up staffing if it's required. As the Commissioners may or may not know, we have an officer assigned to Charles Regional Medical Center 40 hours a week. We have beefed that up. We've added 20 extra hours in agreement with the hospital. So 60 hours a week, we will have an officer in and around the emergency department to help with whatever needs to be done. Excuse me. We remain in close contact with Sheriff Berry and his staff to see if there's, just to ensure we're in lockstep. We also are participating in the Maryland Sheriff's and Chiefs webinars and conference calls that are occurring about every other day. So we're getting updates throughout the state on what, how to enforce the governor's recent actions and how other agencies are using best practices within their communities. One of the things that we believe is that information sharing is extremely important. And if there's going to be a drive-up testing center within our jurisdiction or anywhere within the county, either us or the Sheriff's Department should be made aware of it because there will be traffic problems when those things pop up. There will be a possibility of the need for crowd control. And allowing us to develop a staffing plan prior to those going into effect is critical. No matter how big or small the organization is, if one cog in the wheel isn't working, the whole tire is going to fail. We also know that in La Plata, we have a large homeless population, and we are willing and able to assist with any plan that's going to be implemented to assist those in that part of the community. That's what we're doing as an agency. Again, we have an exposure policy, and we continue to follow accreditation's best practices for pandemics. Any questions that I'm able to answer?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, I'm going to ask for the College of Southern Maryland, Dr. Murphy
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to be here today, and I'm impressed by the readiness that I'm seeing here in Charles County, and I thank you for your leadership. We are living in unprecedented times. And last Thursday, by the authority given me by the Board of Trustees, I declared a state of emergency at the College of Southern Maryland. The safety of our 23,000 students and our over 1,000 employees is paramount right now. What that meant was that we went immediately into reduced operations, and we moved almost all of our instruction online. We began that in earnest yesterday. Last time I was here before you, we talked about how things are changing in higher education, how we needed to be nimble, and we've been able to demonstrate that. We have, we moved online very easily. Right now, we have minimal activity, instructional activity on the campuses. We're looking to wrap it up over the next several days and have all of our instruction online. Anything that we've got on campus, we're practicing social distancing. We've elevated our hygiene standards, as I believe everybody has in any kind of public building. And we're moving forward with a remote work environment for our support in administrative services. We've assessed our employee preparedness, and our employees are not a whole lot different, I think, from many of our students. We do have spotty connectivity among Southern Maryland. We have issues with people's access to those kinds of things, and frankly, we have some workers who cannot, because of the nature of their work, work from home. We're taking all of that under consideration. We've given employees with school-aged children either the opportunity to work remotely or to receive paid administrative leave until we are over this particular crisis. Our campuses are closed to the public. Only currently registered students and authorized personnel are allowed on campus. We will probably restrict that more in the very near future. The St. Charles Children's Learning Center, our childcare center on La Plata campus, has been closed until further notice. We do have regional challenges with internet access and with transportation, and that affects our students and our employees. We're keeping that in mind. We're looking at other kinds of strategies to help recover for our students on the other side of this pandemic. We also have some concerns because we are not getting quick enough guidance from federal agencies, particularly the Department of Education, which has oversight of many of our grants and federal financial aid, which affects a lot of our students. The Veterans Administration guidance is coming forward in dribs and drabs, which has been very good, so that we're able to give better guidance to our students who are veterans. Like the public schools, we're very concerned about food insecurity among our students, and we are looking to expand opportunities to partner with other agencies. Our students who come to us from the public schools may have been on free and reduced meals and may indeed be food insecure. Currently, we run five food pantries across our four campuses in Southern Maryland. We will be looking for other strategies to see what we can do to help breed that hunger gap while we are not operating physically. Our chief operating officer, Dr. Bill Comey, is coordinating with the Health Department and the other agencies who are in this room and across the region. He is the person who is at the helm, making things, making sure that we are working in the same direction. We stand ready to help anybody who is there. The most current information for our college is always on our CSM Ready website. It is updated minimally daily lately. It's been multiple times daily. So with that, that's our update, and I'm ready to entertain any questions.
I do have a question. Good morning. Thank you for the information. So those students that actually have labs, do you, can you speak to what those, what that curriculum is going to look like?
Most of the labs, right now, we have minimal labs operating to wrap up midterm for most students on campus. We do have some labs in some sciences that are virtual labs. We've moved ahead, for example, in anatomy and physiology pretty dramatically, and we could frankly do anatomy, physiology I and II completely online. So we're looking at developing that capacity for our science labs. Some labs we cannot do, and we're just going to have to reschedule later. For example, everything that happens in the Center for Trades and Energy Training is on hold right now, and I keep referring to the other side, and on the other side, we will do makeup for those students.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioners, I'm going to ask Michelle Lilly from the Department of Emergency Services
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Michelle Lilly. I'm the Acting Director of Emergency Services. And in response to the COVID emergency, we have activated our Emergency Operations Center, or the EOC, to an enhanced level for the duration of the event. I just want to thank you for signing the state of emergency because that did allow us to take emergency protective measures that help us protect our employees as well as the public in the county. At this point, we've been having core planning team meetings every day, and we'll have that through the duration. The core planning team is what you would imagine for emergency response. So we have all of our volunteers involved in that. We have our career EMS, we have 911, we have hospitals, and we have the Health Department. And our primary job in the Emergency Operations Center is to support the Health Department through the duration of this event as they're our lead agency for any health emergency. I just want you to know a few of the things that we've been doing with the core planning team, because I've noticed some of the questions and the things that we've discussed today. One of the things was, we're working with CRMC through the process of them possibly setting up a drive-through collection point for testing for COVID-19. That's in the very early planning stages because, as Dr. Lowry mentioned, it has been difficult, I think, for them to get the testing kits and the media necessary for them to be able to perform those tests. So we're coordinating the manpower for that, as well as utilizing tents that the Health Department has, that the hospital can utilize. And where we also have law enforcement involved in that core planning team, they were definitely involved in anything that we do for setting up site plans, security, and things of that nature. Also, we've been working on developing a screening forum so that in addition to screening at the 911 level for COVID, we're also screening in the field on regular calls. So if we had a call out there, all of our emergency responders have access to a card that helps them assess and ensure that they're wearing the proper PPE to protect themselves during any type of emergency call. And that's available to law enforcement, fire, and EMS. We're also coordinating resource requests for the hospital, as well as for our EMS responders for difficult-to-find supplies right now, such as hand sanitizer and face masks and gowns and other protective gear. Also thinking ahead, we're coordinating in-house to make sure that we're capturing all of our costs in the event that we do have the possibility of getting reimbursement through the Federal Stafford Act and through MEMA. And also, I just want to say that Emergency Services stands ready and prepared to respond to these emergencies and support all of our volunteers and emergency responders out there in the field. Do you have any questions for me specifically?
I do.
Okay.
Good morning. As far as transporting a COVID-19 patient, what does that look like for you guys? I kind of think I know, but if you can tell us what that looks like.
Sure, sure. So where we've put different questionnaires in place from the 911 side, we're trying to make sure that we screen on the phone call prior to sending out emergency responders in the field. And that's occurring on the 911 side as well as on the EMS side. And that's to make sure that we're protecting our personnel when they're out there. Also, like I said, the core planning team has been working through developing a questionnaire so that when the EMS providers get on scene, they can keep their distance, they can assess the patient, and make sure that they're dawning and doffing the appropriate PPE prior to making contact with that patient. When they put them into the ambulance, primarily, we have a specific ambulance at Emergency Services that we like to use that's easier for us to do decon on because it has filters and things of that nature, and it has a separate box for the driver versus where the patient is contained at. However, that's not always available because if it is already on a call, we're sending a secondary unit. However, everybody is out there in the field. We've been communicating. We've been making sure that all of our responders are very aware of what the process is to ensure that when we make that transport, everybody's wearing the appropriate PPE. And once it's complete, they're making sure that the ambulance has been decon before it's been utilized for that next call. We've also been doing a quality assurance process for career and volunteers so that we're all communicating to make sure that every time we go through this event, we're having lessons learned and we're taking additional measures to make sure that we're safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good morning. In the town's response to COVID-19, we have closed Town Hall for walk-ins. All contact with Town Hall can be done through phone at 301-743-5511, email at info@townofindianhead.org, or you can find a list of staff contacts on our website at townofindianhead.org. All payments can be done over the phone on our website or via the town's Dropbox. A reminder, no late chargers or cutoffs will happen with town utilities at this time in accordance with the governor's executive order. Permits office is still online. You can call Town Hall to coordinate a safe and healthy delivery. A reminder that the Town Hall is closed to walk-ins, so you must coordinate that via phone. All meetings of committees have been indefinitely canceled or postponed. All nonessential meetings of the Town Council have been postponed. The event schedule has been suspended for the time being, and we are looking into our ability to host video conferencing for those essential meetings of council to still be able to conduct business in a safe manner. We are encouraging everyone to socially distance, utilizing our Facebook to disseminate reliable information sources as it relates to the virus, and we are following the recommendations of the CDC, Maryland Department of Health, and Charles County Health Department. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you.